Good evening and welcome to the June meeting of the Penfield Board of Penfield Public Library. We have a special guest with us tonight who will be introduced later, but we are pleased to have everyone with us except Judy, who will not be able to attend.
Megan.
And Megan, yes. First item of business is approval of the minutes. Has everyone read them? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve them.
Thank you, Jen. And Brett will second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Naraj, would you like to lead us through the financial report?
Sure. Thank you so much. I'm going to start with the monthly balance sheet for the library. We're looking at the operating budget on the top half. That's positive and it's $1.2 million left. Our gifted memorial fund activity, the balance is above our threshold, so that's looking good. That's largely unchanged from last month. If we can now switch our attention to the budget summary. This has data through May. That's five months out of the year, so that's about 42%. The revenue, most, like, pretty much all of the revenue has already been accounted for, and it's hit our account, so there's no variance right now because we've received everything. Let's look at the expenses. At the bottom, you see that total expenses is about 33%, and our threshold again was 42%. So we're significantly better than budget, about 10%. So where does the better variance come out? The wages is the most controllable. That's about 8% better than budget. There is opportunity in materials. That's also 14% better than budget, but this section, we, I expect, computer software, electronic resources, there hasn't been as much spending compared to budget. So those two line items in particular are probably gonna, we're gonna probably see it later in the year. Contractual expenses, that's also 12% better than budget. The two, the two line items that we see the most opportunity in are leased equipment and office supplies. Everything else offsets, like workers' comp and other line items that we can't control as much. So this is a good month. We're 10% better than budget. That's a great story.
Thank you. Thank you. Did he win?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can make, you can make a motion. And Brett can second it again. All in favor of approving the financial reports? Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast on PC TV, and so it is available to the public, and back, back copies or back meetings are available on YouTube for people who are interested in seeing them. And now it's time for the report from our town board liaison, Lynda Cole.
Well, as you know, the library, library is going to be participating in the Fourth of July parade, and that's coming up on July 2nd, 10:00 AM. Please be there. It'll be a lot of fun. But the most important thing tonight is that our Penfield Town Supervisor has joined us to meet all of you and hear what's happening in the library, Marie Cinti. And I don't know, Marie, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for the very kind introduction. I just wanted to say hello. I'm trying to get to visit all the boards and committees as quickly as I can, but I just really appreciate all your work and support of the public library. I'm a big fan and user of the library. I also give a lot of financial support in the form of late fees. I would just like to say that. But I look forward to working with you, and please let me know how the town can support you.
Any questions? Sometimes they ask me things.
Is that your report?
It is, because it's really what's happening. That's the big thing coming up. We're, summer music, summer music series is happening right now. Marie was out introducing a concert tonight. You know, it's, we're on the road for summer and activities around town, and town's doing really well. There's road work going on, of course. That's, that's not really a lot of us. The state is out milling the road out in front of the town hall, you know? I mean, there's all that going on. But our website indicates all that information of those activities coming up, so please, you know, follow it or the supervisor's column.
Yeah, I think a really good resource, Linda, that was a great report, a really good resource to use if you want to see what's happening in the town, is to go to the website under Projects of Community Interest, and we really are trying hard to keep that up to date. So if you have a question about something, whether it's actually at the state, county, or town level, you should be able to go right to the website, Projects of Community Interest, and it should be right there. So thank you very much, and thanks, Linda.
Thank you both. We will move on to our committee reports. Does the Finance Committee have anything this evening?
No.
Okay. Personnel?
No.
But...
Right, so we do have one new full-time employee. Emily Gaul has been hired as our new full-time library clerk. As you know, Kathleen Wakefield did retire. She continues to volunteer and work as a sub at the library, which we're very grateful for. But Emily is our new full-time clerk. This is a civil service position, so we did have to go through civil service procedure, and we're thrilled with, with Emily. We're really happy to have her with us, and so far, I think she's happy to be there. So that's great.
That is great.
Yes.
Strategic planning.
Excuse me, Barbara, we need a motion to appoint Emily.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there a, would someone like to move?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Rachel and Denise, who'd like a second? Thank you. All in favor of appointing Emily to the clerk's position? Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna.
It's good to keep us on the straight and narrow. Melissa, would you like to talk about strategic planning, or do you want, I think Rhonda might be covering that in the director's report.
Probably.
Yes.
I don't think there's much new since our last meeting. We finished up the community sessions, and then I think Rhonda can talk about the rest of where we're at.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And bylaws, we have, Megan isn't here this evening, but we have a revised policy on employee identification name badges. You've had it for a month or so, and I think we are ready to vote. Is there, would someone like to move that we adopt this policy?
Should we discuss the revisions and see if it's okay? I mean...
We can. I think we've discussed this issue quite a bit.
Great.
Unless somebody has something they want to say about it? No?
Okay.
Brett?
Should you approve it?
Thank you, Brett. Is there a second? Thanks, Jen. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you. Communications and advocacy? Okay. And that brings us to Rhonda and the director's report.
Thank you. So some, you have the report. The highlights include the 2021 Annual State Report. I've done now seven reports over the years. I have never had one come back without any edits. It's the strangest thing. They always find something. It's a 25-page document. It came back with no edits, so either they're very, very tired, or I finally figured out how to do it. I don't know which one, but came back fine, and you voted on it, so you know what it was included, so nothing has been changed. We have been working with town staff and committee members to look at our building, our facility, and I want to thank you, Marie, and thank Carrie Ivis for coming to the building and looking at everything over. And I also want to thank Eric Tate and Mark Valentine, who came and discussed possible contractors for a small project that we can begin with, which is a renovation of the Ruth Berman Room. So I have spoken to two contractors now. I'm waiting for estimates. I, I would like to know if the board would be interested in forming a small temporary committee to talk about the project as we go into the application process, because there are decisions to be made. I'm happy to work with Barbara alone, just the two of us. I've been communicating all along with her. We can continue that way, but if you're interested in the renovation and the changes to the room, we can have a committee. What would you prefer?
I'm open.
I'm open.
Would anybody like to be on the committee? I would think that maybe two more people would be a good number.
It could, almost all of it can be done via email, because, yes?
I'd be interested, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would be interested, too. I was just worried about timing.
I think we can, I can take pictures.
Yeah.
And, and we can work that way. I know how busy everybody is, so, great. We had a meeting with Baker &amp; Taylor, and now we just had some discussions with Ingram. We're trying to find ways to save money from our book vendors, and we are finding several opportunities for those savings. So that has been changed. Strategic planning. So strategic planning has been a focus for the staff and several of the committee meetings. I do want to just thank the committee meeting, the committee members. So Melissa, Judy's not here, Barbara, of course, and Megan is not here, but I want to thank the staff members, Kim, Lara, Sarah, Elizabeth, Julie, and Stephanie, for all of the hard work and extra time that they've spent at the library on this project. We have, we have done an in-house program with the public. We've done a virtual program with the public. We did a survey, and now the committee has come together and written a first draft of these long-range strategic plan that should bring us into the next five years in the building, or in a building, I should say, because, because we don't know for sure where we'll be. So you all have copies of it. I don't want to vote on it tonight. If you have suggestions, you know, please take a look at it. We can wordsmith for hours, as we have already done, but I, I think that this plan really encompasses all of the improvements that we've discussed, and it also shows how important the library is to the community, which is really what our aim has been. Let's see. About seven staff members have been attending a webinar called Understanding Racism. It's a four-part series for public libraries, and it's really been well-received by the staff, and I think it's always important for us to discuss how we can improve our interactions with all people who come to the library or use our services. I want to thank the friends of the Penfield Public Library for the volunteer appreciation luncheon, which took place a couple, two weeks ago. It was so lovely. It was my first volunteer luncheon, and I can't even tell you how enjoyable I thought it was. It was just a good feeling all around, so thank you to the friends for giving us lunch, a really delicious lunch, and thank you for everybody who helped out, and of course, thank you to all of our volunteers, including all of you who make the library what it is. Miriam Spencer and I went to the Town of Penfield Wellness Fair on June 9th. We spoke to about 50 people about the library's materials on health and fitness, and we promoted summer readings, so that has been great. I want to thank Deanna for going to the Memorial Day Ceremony. Deanna, for, on the, on Memorial Day. So thank you for representing us then. We're working on safety in the library. That's coming up soon. We are going to get an extra $300 in local library services aid towards summer reading expenses, going to come through the state, so you'll see that soon. And the last thing I want to discuss is, for those who might not know, I'm sure Marie knows, the, between the 2010 census and the 2020 census, we increased by about 3,500 residents, 3, 200 residents, sorry. But what that means, and that's fantastic, it's wonderful, this is all good news, but what it does mean is that our cost share with our library system, Monroe County Library System, is going up $3,571 to account for those additional people, because as other town populations go down, somebody has to, somebody's making that up. So we did talk about our budget, and you did approve a potential budget. I do have to increase that by this 3,571, so I just want to let you know that, that will, that is the increase. That's about it. We've had great programs, stories. Summer reading has begun. People are coming in all day and signing up for summer reading. It's really exciting, and parents and children are very excited about everything that the Children's Librarians are doing. Oh my gosh, they, if you haven't been to the library recently, please come down and see all of the artwork on the walls. They have decorated every wall that you can see with the ocean theme. It's, it's just adorable, and they have so many great programs coming up. So any age, there's a program for you. And that's about it. Any questions? Yes, Marie.
I was just hoping you could pass the information about the ocean theme to Chris Toney, our Director of Communications, so that he can publicize it as well for us. Thank you.
I could do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on Rhonda's remarks or any other part of the report? The only thing I would like to suggest is, now that we've all been back in, in person for almost a year, if we could have comparisons on the monthly report, so when they, we can compare the number of programs, and if they didn't have any last year, when they did start having programs, compare the number of programs, the number of attendees, and, and so forth, so we get a feeling. I imagine that the numbers are going up, but it would be helpful to actually have that documented on a month-by-month basis.
Yes. So if you look at the director's report, for those who are at home, we do compare circulation numbers to one year ago, overdrive numbers to one year ago, reference stats, or questions that people ask at the reference desk, to one year ago, but we can include one year ago for all of our stats, and maybe that would be helpful.
I think, I think it would, and then we could see, you know, are there programs that are consistently outperforming what the expectations are? Are there some that are underperforming? In that case, should we keep them? Should we not? I mean, I just think that having the numbers is really useful to having a good discussion.
Absolutely. And I will divide them by, by which ones were in-person, which ones were virtual, but what happens, what happened during the pandemic, what we found during the pandemic all across the board for public libraries, is that you could have a virtual program and put it on your YouTube or your Facebook page, and you would get a phenomenal number of, of people really just watching for two seconds and moving on, but we were able to count them. And they changed that in 2021, but 2020, we were counting two seconds. 2021, I think we had to stay on for something like a minute, but still, it was a minute. So the numbers are not, they're not really comparable to what we, we're doing in-person. But yes, absolutely, I can easily do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? New business. We want to talk about this meeting. We're, we're good, we have two members who are not here, but last, our last meeting, we were very, very fortunate that we did have five members, and for a while, it was touch and go as to whether or not we were going to have enough people to actually have a meeting. So I wondered, I wanted to have a discussion about that. How do you feel about attendance at these meetings? I mean, what do you think should be a legitimate reason for not being at a meeting? Obviously Denise had a baby, she was not able to be here, but, you know, sometime, and you can't, if you have a sick child or a sick spouse, those, those are things that happen in life, and I think we've all dealt with those, but I don't know if there, if there is anything, do you have any, have, has this issue come up in any of the other libraries you've worked with, Rhonda?
Absolutely, yes, of course. It's, it, it is important that at least you communicate to us that you're not coming, so at a certain point, we know that we need every other remaining person to come, or the, or the meeting is moot, we, we can't vote. So I, I would just say that if you know you can come ahead of time, please, you know, email Barbara, email me, call, because then we can figure it out. But sometimes, I, I know that sometimes things happen last minute, but I, you know, I mean, if, if you, if we can communicate to you that we really need you that night, you know, maybe you would make a different decision.
I thought there was a requirement, you couldn't miss more than two meetings a year.
It's in our bylaws.
It's in our bylaws. I think it's three. If you miss more than three meetings a year, you're supposed to be, but, out, but I think that is something that has not been observed, and I think most people try very hard to be present whenever they can.
I know last month, when I couldn't make it, you offered the Zoom, I think, option, which I wasn't, I wasn't able to do, but is that an option, and is that okay?
It is always an option, as long as we are...
Well, it's kind of an option, because town policy, and Marie, this is what I understand, tell me if I'm wrong, town policy is you can Zoom for, if you're a member of a board, you can Zoom if you're ill, but you really shouldn't be Zooming because you're vacationing in Florida. Is that correct?
I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the, obviously, if you can be here in person, you are expected to be here in person. I think that I have something in writing that I could probably just send over to you, and maybe that would be helpful for you.
I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. And also, the governor, or the, I believe there was just some update to the open meeting law, too, so I just want to be sure that I'm sending you the most current version.
Thank you.
My feeling is that as long as we are being covered by Penfield Television, they have the ability to set up a Zoom so you could attend and be part of it if you're, if you're ill, if you have an ill child, or something else happens that you really can't plan on.
Yeah, I think for the most part, I mean, I think we've always had, I don't think we've had a meeting that we haven't had quorum, so...
No, but the last time, we came very close to not having one.
I understand that.
And, you know, sometimes people are out for not, not illness, not, you know, a child who's ill, but, you know, if that happens a lot, then I think you have to kind of, I don't know what the polit, our policy or our bylaws say, that after three meetings of unexcused absences, you're out.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we want to go there. That seems a little rigid, but on the other hand, we don't want to just be so loose that people feel like it doesn't, the meetings don't have any meaning.
Yeah, I understand, but I think, I think we've all been communicating whether we, we can make it or not.
Well, yes.
And, and we've not had any meetings that we haven't had a vote, that, that we didn't make quorum. But yeah, I think everyone's adults, and we're, we're communicating. We know what's priority, my family's priority. If I, if they have a violin concert, I'm going to try. Last week, we had a violin concert. I came in just to come in for the report, and then I split out, but I think we all try our best.
I think so, and I think that we try to be flexible with things like that, so it was, you could come in, do your report, and then...
With May and June, I think it is busy with school violin concerts, like Naraj said, and maybe if there's a, you know, if we all kind of check our calendars ahead of time, if it looks like that month is going to be late, we could always look at rescheduling.
Well, that was going to be my question to Rhonda and Marie. Do we have any option if people have? I know we had several members of this board who were out for various concerts all on the same night. The school, it seemed like every school in Penfield and Webster had scheduled concerts, and, and it's not that people don't want to come, but as Naraj says, his family is his priority. And if we said, okay, that, that night is not going to work, could we do it another night? Do we have flexibility to do that?
You have flexibility that you could do it or just cancel the meeting. You know, we, in the town board, look at, we're elected officials, and sometimes in the summer, not, you know, we haven't done the summer yet with, with the current supervisor, but sometimes in the past, there hasn't been anything on the agenda that was really that important, sometimes in a work session, and people are really busy, and we just canceled it, you know? And we, we did it the next work session. You know, you don't, it, it all depends. I mean, if people are all gone, it's all about...
As long as you advertise it, as long as you promote it, that your date has changed, and as long as we work with the town and the staff who are here now for us, as long as we find another time and, and date, we can always change it with, as long as we give enough time ahead of time.
I would also just share that there are some other boards that do have a reduced summer schedule, so the Planning Board, for example, goes down to one meeting a month instead of two. And then I believe the Trails Committee actually adjourns until September. So it's fine to do that, you just cannot, not publicize, sorry. Sorry for the double negative. Just publicize what you're doing in advance, and in as much advance as possible, and you'll be fine.
Right. And we even make that one meeting during the holiday season really quickly, even if we have to make quorum. So I think we're all adults. We communicate, and if, if we see an anticipated absence by a number of them, then yes, let's just reschedule it or cancel or something, but family comes first.
I have one question that Deanna might be able to answer. What happens if we do cancel a meeting and there's, and we don't, we're not here to approve the voucher? Do we do two in another month, or?
Then the vouchers won't. Unfortunately, the vouchers have to be approved, and the voucher list has to be signed by the Board Secretary in order for us to process them. So they would just be held up for another month, which isn't a big deal, because I, I am in communication pretty much daily with our vendors, so they understand we have a system and we have a process that we have to follow.
So if we have to do that, if we have to cancel something, and then we'll just, it's okay to make do?
For example, this month, we already, because our meeting is the 21st, the deadline to submit this month's vouchers were the 17th. So these vouchers won't be, they'll be submitted tomorrow, but the payments will not be processed until July, because we missed the deadline for the Finance Department, which is okay. All the vendors are okay with it. They're aware of it, and they are willing to continue working with us. So there's been no, there's, it's always been a positive communications.
There, there are times also, it's legal in open meetings law to have an email vote as a temporary provision. For example, let's say the library flooded, and we needed to hire contractors to clean the carpet. We can have an emergency vote via email, as long as we have that email paperwork, and then the next meeting, we can have the actual vote. So we could conceivably do that for vouchers.
I think that would be, that would be good.
Marie, are you looking, like, I mean, that's, that's how I've done it in other libraries. Are you thinking that we, town...
That's fine. I wasn't actually...
Because the, you know, Town of Penfield has its own rules. These are rules I know about open meeting law. They might not apply here in Penfield. I'm still learning those rules.
No, we don't have an issue with that. You know, just follow your bylaws, right? That's why you have it.
Our bylaws are a little outdated. That's, that's, that's a...
And that's something we need to look at, yes.
Yes. It's, it's, it's further down on our to-do list, but Rhonda and I have talked about doing them.
Right, but there's nothing in the bylaws that would stop us from doing that?
No.
As they're written now?
No.
And it is legal.
And if it got to the point where we knew there were going to be six or seven people who were all going to be away or unavailable on a certain night, we could probably do the email approval of the vouchers, and the secretary could go in and sign.
Yeah, I was going to say, could we ever, if you needed to, could we ever, like, Zoom just to approve vouchers, if you had to, in a pinch?
It would have to be a regular meeting that was promoted as a board meeting.
Because I know when we Zoomed before, we could just announce that, because Barbara would say for everyone at home, you can re-watch this or whatever. So if we got in a pinch, I mean, the email one sounds fine to me, but I'm just thinking if it really messes with your payments, that's not good.
It doesn't have to.
No, I think email would...
It doesn't have to mess with the payments.
Yeah. Okay.
If it ever happened, we would figure it out and make sure that the payments were on time.
Yep. So if you know that something is coming up, like everyone knew about the concert, and please let me know, let Rhonda know, and, and we talk, so we would be able to figure out how many people are going to be here and plan accordingly.
Or it's tax season.
Yes. I can't make it, so that's...
Okay. And then there's an item on here, the 2020 census data, but I think you already covered it.
I did, and so my question to you was, because we voted on the proposed budget for 2023, and I'm increasing that proposed budget by $3,571, do we need to amend that vote?
I don't know, but why don't we, is there someone who would like to make a motion or to move that we amend our budget by $3,571?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Naraj. Rachel will second. All in favor? All in favor? And that way.
That way, just in case. Thank you.
We're covered. Is there any continuing business? And the claims payment? That was.
That was me.
That was you.
I make a motion that we pay the vouchers in the amount of $7,266.35.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And we need to—the next person on the list is Denise.
So remind me again what I do—I know I have to do that part, but who signs off on—is it someone different that signs off on the secretary part for that?
Yeah, so you would sign off on the vouchers, and then Naraj will sign off on the vouchers.
On mine, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to bring up at this time? Okay. I think we have reached the end of our agenda. Our next meeting is July 19th at 7:00 p.m., right here in the town hall. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Naraj. Second. Thank you, Melissa and Brett. All in favor? Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.